We have a request for agenda addition or deletion. Right now, I have a note here. One, deletion would be the quote for new windows because, Katie, correct me if I'm wrong, we're still waiting on bids?
Yeah.
Okay. So is there a motion to take that off to the next agenda?
I'll make a motion that we remove town hall windows. Back up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And let me see something. We had the recreation committee, we had a discussion already. I would ask for a motion to take that off of new business.
So moved.
I was gonna say that we actually probably should leave it and at least give the public an update, because I've been getting questions about what's going on with the recreation committee.
I can do that, but I just wanna, when we get down there, I'll just...
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion.
Robbie, come on.
You're gonna, you'll be fine. It's gonna go quick.
Who's playing tonight?
Got my heart beating.
You can beat your record, Mike.
Your heart beating. That's on film. Oh, no. Is there any other additions or deletions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for the regular meeting minutes of November 13th. Is there any corrections on that?
I'll make a motion that we approve the November 13 meeting minutes. I didn't find any corrections, but I'll make it subject to any corrections. Anybody else made a film?
Is there a second for discussion?
There is some.
A second.
It's just above number six. That last sentence, Cash is hoping for more grants to able to complete.
You'd add a B in there?
Be able?
Yeah. To complete projects.
Be able to complete?
That sound right?
Where are you looking now, Marge?
It's just above...
Number six?
The last sentence. Above number six.
Last sentence. Cash is hoping for more grants to, oh yeah, to be able to complete. Okay, that makes sense. Add B.
Is there anything else?
Maybe I didn't say it that way.
All right, hearing nothing else, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Katie, you have that, right?
Your second is...
It was Bob. Excuse me, it was Cash. I'm sorry. Highway, road commissioner, do you have anything that you wanna report?
Just for, let's all set on unless, if anybody's got any questions about the report.
Anybody have any questions for the road commissioner as far as any kind of a report? Any questions?
Questions, but I got like two or three people that absolutely praised the roads.
Right.
Tremendous job, guys.
And please let the crew know that we appreciate their work.
Definitely. Pass it on.
How about paving grant reimbursement? Want to discuss that? Heidi can follow up on that.
So, in front of you, Mike, there's a piece of paper in that folder that says paving grant refund, or something like that. It's basically the conclusive paperwork to be able to finish out our paving grant for this last year.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, for the year before, that we're finishing out now, so that we can get the reimbursement funds. And it calls for all five signatures.
All right, and that's 143,000? That's what they would pay us? Well, I can't wait to sign this.
I'll make a motion that all members of the select board sign the paving grant reimbursement.
Is there a second for discussion?
Second.
Beat ya.
Call's favor.
Who's second is it, then?
Rick.
Rick?
He didn't hear me? I yelled that time.
I didn't hear ya.
Yeah, I got it. He's fast.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, I'll sign.
Take the warrants, 'cause somebody gets a chance to pass them this way.
Just hear it like that there. Just hear it like that there.
There's the rest of them.
There's more. More than worse. All right, anything else under highway, Cash?
I'll yell.
All right, any questions? Don't hear it. RRPC appointment, and Bronson, do you wanna speak to that?
It'd be a really great idea if you appointed me.
To what?
Seeing that we've had no interest in this position, I believe it's been posted on the website for quite some time.
Mm-hmm.
And it's been a vacancy for a significant amount of time, I would gladly make the motion that we appoint Mr. Bronson Spencer to be our representative to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission.
All right, is there a second? It's Cash. Is there any, now, there's some paperwork that has to be signed for this, too.
It's in the folder.
Okay, someplace.
Probably right here.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Oh, you've got a lot of work now, Bronson.
Bronson's opposed. And I will further make the motion that the select board chairman be approved to sign and fill out the paperwork.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I know it's a little off topic, but while we have the chairperson of the...
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission here, are you guys in receipt of, we asked you to review the fee structure that was submitted to us?
I am personally, I haven't sent it to anybody else yet, but I have, I have been looking at it.
Okay. We'll wait to hear from you.
Yes, that's a good idea.
Okay, thank you. And just wanted to make sure.
And while you're here, we did have, can you speak to that river corridor issue that the...
The flood mapping?
Pardon?
The flood map?
Yes. Yes.
The flood map. You know the old saying about the road to hell being paved with good intentions?
Mm-hmm.
That's what the planning commission feels is going on here. Ever since Irene, there's been sort of a push to say that the storm that we've always been regulated by is the so-called Hundred Year Storm, but this is, Irene is now the new Hundred Year Storm, which many of us don't believe to be the case. We think it was much, it was much bigger than a Hundred Year Storm. And so the planning commission's position is that increasing the properties that are going to be subject to flood insurance is bad for the town for several reasons. First of all, it devalues the property, because you can't use it the way you want to. If the value of the property goes down, that means it goes down on the tax rule, so it's an impact on our tax base. It takes land out of productive use. And in doing so, it limits our ability to attract development, and it also deprives the landowner, who is usually a farmer or farm-related, of the benefit of being able to use his property as he sees fit. And as some of you know, that if you are in a flood hazard area and you try to get a mortgage, you pretty much have to acquire flood insurance, which is expensive. That pretty well covers that. Our biggest concern is that there's not much benefit and a whole lot of pain that would come with increasing the number of properties in town that are subject to flood hazard insurance.
So I guess, Mike, I know we're not there yet, and maybe I should just make the motion that we jump to this now and then return to our, so that we can have this discussion totally and get it out of the way. So I guess I'll make the motion that we jump out of order to FEMA flood map update and have that discussion now.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So now that we're legally talking about something, my question would be, is this something like what we've done for the past two or three times to just say, we want no part of it, and we make the motion that we're not participating?
Well, if you don't, if you don't have input, they will, my thought is, the way I understand, they will draw what they think is gonna be. And that's what upsets me. I think they oughta have us look at a blueprint of what they're thinking, and then we add or subtract from that blueprint. That's my opinion.
I don't know, I think we will get a chance. It's a multi-step process. Right now, what they're talking about doing is the mapping. We should be able to see the results of the mapping, and from that, we'll get an idea of what they're thinking.
The indication that we got at the meeting the other day was, once it's done, it's done, and we have to December to respond to this.
You looked at the whole map from 6100, last floodplain map that was done. Have you looked at that? Have I looked at it? Not recently, but yeah. That's available somewhere. Of course. It's in the vault.
And Katie actually can, she was at the meeting with me, of what the...
So, so we got copy, we've seen the copy of the letter you all sent, or at least your clerk sent.
No, we haven't sent it yet.
Oh, it hasn't been sent yet? Okay.
I sent, I don't know what you have, but if it's the one that you got from Yale...
Yes.
It's been kinda revised.
Okay, so this is not even current? Wow. Okay.
That was this afternoon, I think.
Okay.
It's none of my business how you guys do this, but you might wanna wait at least until after the next planning commission meeting before you get. It's entirely up to you. We've already gone by the deadline for the, for the comments. We will send, that's not true, the 28th, they believe, is the deadline, but we will send some version of that letter to the planning commission.
When we...
If you guys read it and wanna join in, that's fine with me.
Yeah, well, what the problem was, they sent it to the board, and then we pushed it over to you guys, because that's your job, is the planning, we don't wanna make that decision unless we have some feedback from the planning commission.
Well, that's what we're gonna do.
And so, you know, I'm willing to wait. Far as I'm concerned, I've seen enough of the regional planning commission and their great ideas that wind up being that you're gonna do this or, or else, kinda stuff. I never liked that regional planning commission post, anyway. I think it's, it was supposed to be so bordering towns or neighboring towns know what you're thinking, everything else, and we said it right up at the state house at the time, that if this is created, they're gonna wind up being Charles in charge.
Isn't the driver on this FEMA?
Give me a pardon?
FEMA's the main driver on this.
Who is?
FEMA.
It's FEMA's program.
Exactly.
I don't know that they're the main drivers. My gut feeling is the agency of natural resources is the main driver. The other thing is being blunt and unpolitical, which I may have to do. FEMA spent a whole lot of money on the last few go rounds with major storms and disasters, and I think they wanna get some money in. The way to get money in is to sell more insurance. And that may be cynical, and I may be dead wrong, but I don't think so.
Mm-hmm. Well...
Makes sense.
It's the carrot on the stick. Once you reach for the carrot, they beat you with the stick. So I don't, I may be close-minded, but...
I'll make a motion...
Marge has a question.
Well, my question is, somewhere I'm, I'm reading that the Rutland Regional Barb-Pulling is gonna help set this up, and somebody was gonna go for a grant for a fifteen thousand or something, and twelve thousand came from the town, or three thousand came from the town, twelve. Now, this happened with the town plan and Barb-Pulling, and those guys wrote our whole town plan. So if you're getting a grant, they give it to Rutland Regional, and they pay Barb-Pulling eighty-five dollars an hour to write, to take the local out of our town plan, and this is what they do. So if they're getting into this river stuff, and they're gonna write it for you, they're gonna take you right out, local people right out of it.
So I'd like to make my motion now?
Go for it.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the chairman of the planning commission to include in their letter that the town select board has resolved that they also want no part of any further FEMA mapping in the town of Clarendon, as what stands is sufficient.
Is there a second for discussion?
Second.
All right. I certainly would like to start the discussion, I don't, as far as I'm concerned, having dealt with A and R and stuff of late, I'm sick of it. Everything wants to make Burlington look pretty, the rest of the state winds up high and dry. I'm totally in agreement with this motion, and I can't wait to see the finished letter that comes from our town. So...
I echo that, fed up with A and R. I don't trust him as far as I can see him.
Anybody else wanna make the final comment before we...
Just that, I don't think we really wanna get involved in this. We see what happened with Irene, how much help we actually got in the end out of it and so on. We got a river up there, they still have not done a thing about today, which is eleven years later, and so on, and so why get involved in something that's not gonna help us anyway? Let's just steer right clear of it.
Anybody else wanna weigh in? All right, there's a motion made, we've had, and seconded, we've had some discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? For the record, unanimous. All right, Bronson, you have anything else for us on the planning commission?
I don't know. You've done an awesome job right now in ten minutes. I'm impressed. I've never seen you guys move so fast.
Well, it's football night. Come on, it's Monday night, that's why...
You don't know how good it is, if I may, just for a second, how good it is to hear your opinion of the way things are going, because I was on the regional planning commission back quite a while, and we almost had them straightened out, sort of, they'd stayed a hell out of Act 250 applications.
Right.
Now they've gone the other way big time.
Yep.
My work's cut out for me, but by God, we'll get there again.
Let me know if you need anybody to bring a bat up there.
Pardon me?
Let me know if you need anybody to carry a bat up there.
Well, I'm getting old, I'm not as strong as I used to be, so come on with me.
I have no problem with that.
Will you email me the language of that motion?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Bronson.
Thank you, Bronson.
Let's go right to propane bids.
Public comments, we gotta go back up.
Oh, yep, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Any public comments? Propane bids for the town. How many bids did we get?
So, we received two bids from Irving and Suburban, and they are in there, and then Cash had talked to CB Oil, and they just gave us, so we don't have a problem with propane.
I don't see any Toldons. Oh, yes, I do, there we go. Fixed price from Irving was a dollar thirty-two for propane and catalytic. I don't see Suburban. Do you see a Toldon in it?
Uh, yeah, right there. Dollar, dollar fifty-one for twelve months. So Suburban is twenty cents more expensive. Did our current company offer us anything?
I couldn't contact them.
To know, 'cause, I mean, we know what we're paying currently, right? What are we, what are we paying currently?
Two forty-seven.
The history offered from Irving is only for the twenty-one hundred gallons of propane as requested in the bid.
Yeah, it's a pre-buy.
Right.
Yep. So I guess my motion would be for us to first contact Keizer Energy and allow them the opportunity to beat a dollar thirty-two a gallon, and if they do not beat that price, we authorize the switch over to Irving.
Is there a second for discussion?
I'll second.
Is that a pre-buy with Suburban also?
Yes. Yep.
How, open for comment, right?
Yep.
We need to get onto this, 'cause we just publicized it. I don't think it's fair that we tell them what the price is, and then they come in.
Well, what do we, what do we care if they come in at a dollar thirty-one? You're still saying, you're still saving.
Yeah, you're still okay.
Right? You're, I mean, you're just giving our current company the opportunity to beat...
I don't think it's fair to the company to come in at that low price and then...
Have somebody come in lower.
Have someone make them lower, and they know what's going on.
But it's on public TV, so...
Katie can reach out, like, tomorrow to them?
Yeah, I mean, and you may wanna push to talk to Chris Keizer directly, although I believe Keizer Energy has been sold at this point. I don't believe it's still in the family, I think it's been sold.
And once that investigation, if you will, is done, and whichever way it goes, do I have the authority to sign for the board?
Yep. I'll add that to my motion, that's fine. Still second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, Katie, you have that? Okay. Town officer report. Heidi?
So budget is coming along. Our next budget meeting will be December 2nd, which is next Monday, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. And then I would like to ask the board their opinion and direction as far as, I believe we should be getting cemetery mowing bids for fiscal '21. So can we, can you authorize or ask us to do that for the next regular meeting, to have a minimum of three bids to present to you?
Do they have any objections to that?
I don't have any.
Why don't we give us the dates? It's July 2021.
July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021.
That's the mowing season.
All right, so...
That's the fiscal year.
I entertain, hold up, Heidi, I entertain a motion right now to start that action.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Yes.
Yes, Marge?
Now, Mumford just said he's not gonna do the mowing of the rec field, so is that included in this bidding?
No, I think, aren't they, my understanding was...
Well, they get their own...
That they were going to.
Okay.
Yeah, they get their own bid, and if they wanna contact the person that does the cemeteries, they can.
Oh, okay.
But...
We wouldn't add that to this here?
No, because that's...
It's their responsibility.
They already have the money, that's their purview. Is there anything else, Heidi?
No, that's all I got.
Kelly, do you have anything?
Seeing a lot of payments come in, some payment plans come in, and I'm taking a class next month on all the new stuff coming out.
Hey, personal question, did you introduce Matt to Mickey Mouse?
Yes, Matt met Mickey Mouse.
Trying to catch him, but he's...
Didn't work out?
He's gone.
Katie, do you have anything else that you want to...
Um, no.
No? All right, Bob, do you have any concerns?
Just, just a little thought. Back earlier this year, I believe Robert brought it up, about getting the stones repaired in the cemetery next door. I got ahold of Holden over here, got a quote from him, it's here somewhere in the town hall, left of here, and Cindy Davis tried very hard, my understanding, get the, the guy out of West Brom, what's his name, Booker, to come over and give us a report, and we didn't. So I think next spring, I'd like to see us get right on this and get it done, you know? If we can get three quotes, fine, if we only get one, let's do it.
Okay.
I agree. It's been long enough.
Yes.
This monument over here that's been down, has been down now for three or four years.
Well, anyway, if not a little more, yeah. That's all I have.
Do you have anything to ask?
Just wanna wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and be safe on the roads, respect other drivers, and especially your power truck drivers.
Speed limits?
Speed limits, low speed limits. Yes, the speed limits.
That all?
That's all.
All right, and happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving. Other than that, I think we're moving forward in the right direction, and keep going.
Thank you.
Same, happy, uh, happy Thanksgiving. I don't know why that was on my mind, but my mind is still scrambled, understand that. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody, don't overeat, I never do.
Yes.
And have a great day.
All right, I entertain a motion...
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Hmm? Oh.
What's that?
He just brought up a good, you, after we had voted not to take it off the agenda, we skipped recreation to offer the update.
I thought we took it off.
No, we didn't, we didn't vote to take it off.
All right.
So do you wanna skip back and, do you wanna offer an update?
All right.
You're a member?
Or you want me to?
Where have you been?
Yeah, you can, Rob.
Same place I've been.
So during our budget, during our budget meeting that started at five o'clock prior to this meeting, we did have Tim Mumford and John came in. We were told that apparently there's been attempts to have meetings, however, Rick said he's been unaware of that. And then they did say that apparently meetings had not happened for at least six months, it sounded like. So the budget, as it currently stands in, in our budget, is up a little bit, because Tim made it clear that he was not mowing lawns next summer. So, and he's been very, very good to the town, so publicly we'll state that for the TV camera, that we have a huge appreciation for Tim Mumford and the work he has done mowing the rec fields for the last several years at a very good rate, but unfortunately, that is coming to an end. So we are gonna, the budget is fluctuating some because of that and the likelihood that mo-bids are not gonna come in that low going forward. They were charged with, I would say, charged the right term...
Yes.
That they need to pick up their meeting schedule and get back on at least a minimum of once a month meetings. So, I think...
Did I miss anything else?
With the possible, possibility of a select board member being present.
With the possibility of having to, well, which Rick's on the select board and the rec committee, so, which I think you gave him your information again, just in case he didn't have it.
Yeah, I gave him my email and my phone number.
So hopefully, right around first of the year, I would assume, if not December, there'll be meetings that will start back up again.
Some of the concern, if I can, just add, that they weren't meeting, it was because of the issue... was because of the issue we had with the ball field and the wetlands and all this stuff. Uh, and that seems to be, uh, coming to a conclusion. Um, and so this is why the Select Board is encouraging them to meet so that we can start setting up possibly having, uh, you know, entities rent the fields out or whatever. So. Just wanted to add that in there. All right, there was a motion made to adjourn, and it was seconded by Rick. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Keep getting looks.